Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the City of Prattville. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Cables.
Here.
Counselor Stritchick.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here. Declaring a quorum present, I will call this public hearing to order. This hearing relates to a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975, as amended. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing on this matter closed, and we will move into our next meeting. As you're able, will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in prayer, please? Father, in the midst of our personal agendas, we pause to thank you for the gift of this day and for your gifts of life, health, and strength. Our sympathy is extended to those that have lost loved ones in recent days, and we're mindful of those that are daily wrestling with the challenging issues of life. We ask for your hand of comfort, your gift of peace, to be with all affected. We pray for all citizens that are providing service to their fellow man, whether local or abroad, whether military, civilian, or public service. We pray for their efforts to be successful and at the end of their duty for their safe return to their family. We pray for the health and healing of nations in conflict, for our country, our state and its leadership, for our community, and for all of those that have an influence on history. Tonight, as we conduct the business of your city, we ask that our thoughts and actions be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Cables.
Here.
Counselor Stritchick.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here. Declaring a quorum present, I will call the meeting to order. The character trait of the month is flexibility, willingness to change plans or ideas without getting upset. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the City Council meeting minutes held on May the 16th, 2017.
Sunday.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. The minutes are adopted. At this time, we will move into comments portion of our meeting. Those of you that are students of our agenda will see a slight change this evening. Tonight, you will have two separate opportunities to comment on agenda matters. The first opportunity is restricted to comments concerning Agenda Item Resolution Number Three, which will satisfy our State Constitution Amendment Number 772 requirements concerning the published public notice. In 2004, the Alabama Legislature passed Act Number 2004-94, which by statewide vote is now known as Amendment 772 to our 1901 Constitution. This act gives governmental entities broad authority to induce and support economic development utilizing public funds. The City of Prattville, Otto County Commission utilized this feature to establish lawfully authorized incentives for James Hardy building materials. The Waterworks Board is considered an affiliate of the City of Prattville. Accordingly, their obligation, if any, under the 772 amendment is covered by this meeting. Fulfilling our legal responsibility relating to Amendment 772 requires us to accomplish three steps. Number one, advertise with the newspaper with the largest circulation in the city or county, announcing this opportunity for you to make public comment. Number two, offering a period for comment. And number three, for the council to vote on this resolution in a public meeting. The public notice was prepared by the attorney representing Prattville's Economic Development Team. The first public comment opportunity this evening is dedicated exclusively to comments from the public related to Project Black Dog, which is now publicly known as James Hardy Building Products. Please note, the public notice invites comments, not questions. I will repeat, this forum is for you to make comments, not ask questions. The agreement drafted by James Hardy, of which the City, the County, and the Waterworks Boards are parties, asserts the Alabama Trade Secrets Act, which forbids its signers from releasing any information in the agreement that has not been authorized or previously released by James Hardy. Therefore, at no time, either before our public vote or after our public vote, neither the City, the County, nor the Prattville Waterworks Board is at liberty to voluntarily release information contained within the agreement. James Hardy Corporation has authorized and approved the public fact sheet available to you this evening. The information provided on this sheet exceeds the public disclosure requirement to the general public as set forth in Amendment 772. In the event your comment wanders or slides into a question, you will probably be given one of two responses. Number one, please refer to the authorized and approved James Hardy Public Information Sheet provided this evening. Or two, you are invited to write your question on paper, giving your name and address, and deliver to our City's Clerk's office. When the Hardy Corporation designates a mailing address, your question will be forwarded by U.S. Mail for their response. At some point in the future, James Hardy may remove the trade secret status of this agreement. Until then, we must honor the agreement we are a party to. Whether your comments support, or are against, or undecided, there will be a single three-minute time limit for you to express your position. When you arrive at the podium, please slowly and clearly state your name and address for the clerk. I realize this preamble was a bit wordy, but necessary to establish the ground rules concerning the uniqueness of this agreement before we get started. If there is anyone present that would like to comment specifically on Resolution Number Three on tonight's agenda, you are welcome to begin queuing up on each side of the outside aisles so that we can proceed as efficiently as possible. In case you were wondering, you are not required to use the full three minutes. The Chair will recognize each guest and invite them to the podium. Yes, ma'am.
I live at 211 Deer Trace Street. I'm going to read this for speed, and also, these comments were written up before I saw the fact sheet just a few, about 15 minutes ago. This is a sequence of actions regarding Project Black Dog. Hardy approached the state in 2014. They were also looking at three other states. Late 2016, they started seriously considering Prattville. May 16th, council voted to support said project. May 18th, Governor Ivey's announcement of James Hardy's intent to build the facility, build the facility, excuse me, James Blasco, General Counsel for Hardy, is quoted as saying, "We knew within the first 30 minutes of that first meeting that Prattville was special." Also, that four factors made the difference: access to raw materials, access to the interstate, in terms of freight costs, its locations to markets, and workforce, and lastly, I can't think of anywhere I'd rather be than the City of Prattville. May 19th, Montgomery Advertiser article on announcement. May 27th, legal ads listing the eight concessions that the public funds and things of value were to be granted to Hardy along with a notice of this public meeting. And now here we are, 11 days later to discuss it. Much has been reported about Hardy spending $219 million on the facility, the total employment of 205 by 2021, with an average pay of $25 an hour, and the impact it will have. Unfortunately, nothing has been reported on what the actual cost will be for Prattville taxpayers. I was informed Hardy had the sole and absolute discretion on releasing or not releasing this information. The following may already be answered in the handout we just now received, but I would like to touch on some of the aspects of these concessions. The 20-year abatement on educational ad valorem property taxes on personal and real property; the price of the real property before and after Hardy gets title of it at less than fair market value; the cost for the extension of sewer lines and a 12-month favorable rate on sewer rates; and especially the last, certain cash payments and cost of in-kind contributions. Remember, these costs will be on top of the other past and future projects: the continuing High Point Shopping Center debt, the estimated $6 million railroad bridge and road whose bids haven't been let, the Pinecrete upgrade whose bids are to be opened Thursday and may cost upwards of $32 million, and the list goes on. Not having the project's costs available until the evening of the agreement is to be approved is troubling. If Prattville is such the perfect spot for Hardy, why do we have to incur these costs, and why are these costs secret? Do we have, and these are all rhetorical questions, do we have a guarantee Hardy stays even if construction wanes and production ebbs? What if the employee counts and/or payroll is less than projected? What if the railroad bridge and road bid is higher and/or cannot be built within the timeframe? What about the wear and tear of the new road, Highway 82, and County Road 4 due to heavy truck usage? All these factors need to be considered, plus those future projects.
Thank you for your comments.
What?
Your three minutes.
I have one, just one more. Paragraph, please. You're not going to let me finish this? Oh.
Is anyone present that would like to make additional comments? Hearing none, this concludes the public comments section of our meeting relating to Agenda Item Number Three. We will now resume with our regular agenda order. Is there anyone present that would like to address any other items on our agenda this evening? The Speaker's three-minute time limit remains in force. Hearing none. At this time, we will move into the Mayor's Report.
... tonight, and invite our Senator and Representative, Representative up here. Mr. President, Counselors, Madam Clerk, and you too, Mayor. Thank you for allowing us to have a few minutes of your time tonight. Representative Beckman and I, it's hard for me to not call him Paul, Representative Beckman and I are here tonight to just give you a brief overview of the session. There's obviously many, many things that we could talk about for a long period of time, but we won't do that. We'll just touch on some high points. We did have a very successful legislative session. I know that comes as a surprise because when you hear different people talking, this didn't get done, that didn't get done. But with a legislative session, it's a little bit different than a City Council meeting because we have 1,030 bills this session, and there's just, there's no way to vet that many bills and get them through the legislative process, which is obviously cumbersome and intentionally. It's intentionally cumbersome. I will say that we did pass 300 bills, and I'm not so sure that might not be too many as well. But we have to be careful when we start changing laws. It affects you guys, it affects everyday citizen, and we just want to be careful with that. A few of the things that we did pass, we passed two balanced budgets, and you all are very familiar with balanced budgets. You're required, just as we are, to have a balanced budget, unlike our federal government, and that is a very good thing, and we have passed those. One thing that you have not heard in quite a while is proration, dealing with the state budget, and that is because there's been a change in the way we do business. You might not see that in headlines because that's a little bit boring, and as you know, good government is boring. When you don't have the friction and the things that are going wrong, it's just kind of boring. So that's what we had this session with our budgets. We passed both of them, they're both balanced, and I think Representative Beckman will talk a little bit about some of the things that those budgets entail. We did also pass the redistricting bill, as you all know, that's in the courts, and hopefully, we've got those issues resolved, and we'll move forward to those new districts. We also passed an autism coverage bill that will help many, many children all across the state. This is a big, big deal. There's so many kids that I think will be helped through that bill. I was a proud supporter of that. We passed several right-to-life bills, including the Adoption of the Religious Freedom Act, Right of Conscious Act, and we banned assisted suicide in the state. That was not illegal previously. We also ended judicial override. I was not sure about this. This allows a judge to override a jury when it comes to a death penalty, and I wasn't sure about this going in, but then when I looked at the statistics, that most of those occur in the fourth year of a cycle, go into the elections, it tells me that there's undue political pressure that's entering that process, and we've banned that. Now a jury will make that final decision. There's several others: decriminalize midwifery, instituted irrigation tax, tax credit, and then the historic tax credit. I don't know that that will be a major player in what happens in the City of Prattville, but it is available now for the redevelopment of the Cotton Gin Factory, so that's good. We also revamped the Alabama Jobs Act. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we changed that. Historically, when we did economic development, we borrowed money to do those incentives. Now, by and large, we don't do that. We have incentives where the company pays money in, and then these incentives are rebates back for a period of time. You all know that. But that revamping was so popular among those that were trying to recruit to our state that we had some issues with it in reaching that cap before we even thought it was even possible, so we revamped that to give a little more flexibility to you guys, as y'all do y'all's yeoman's work in economic development. A few bills that did not pass, the prison bill, it's important to our area, specifically to Elmore County, which I represent, daycare licensing bill, permitless carry, exemption of prescription drugs, Representative Beckman will talk about, the gas tax, statewide Uber, and many, many others that, if we have time, we'll talk about. So with that, Representative Beckman.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you today. What I want to talk about, first of all, one of the big things that was, in my opinion, as far as that passed, was the autism bill. And what that did was that directed the insurance companies to basically start caring. One in every 68 child that is born today comes down with autism, and basically, that is a burden that the family has to carry, and now that we have insurance as far as helping that families, I think it was a needed act. But we are responsible for two types of legislation. Our main responsibility is the General Fund and the Educational Trust Fund. The General Fund is $1.85 million, and we spend the taxpayers' responsibility anticipating future needs, and for the first time in modern history, we carried a forwarding balance of $93 million over. Normally, we spend everything we get, but we carried $93 million over because the Medicaid is, there is an ongoing problem, as you're well aware, it is increasing. Also, with the general bill, we were also able to hire 30 new state troopers. We need this badly because we, in our infominent wisdom in 2010, we were cutting and cutting, and essentially what had happened is we cut ourselves right out as far as protecting the people. And so now, what we're doing is we're hiring back 30 new state troopers. This Medicaid is a problem, and therefore, we will be addressing it, and we don't know where that is going, but as you're well aware, what you read and what you hear, it is an ongoing problem, and I think it needs first to be secured as far as up in Washington. The Educational Trust Fund was the unanimous support in an increase in spending for K-12 schools, community colleges, and public university by approximately $90 million. It provides an additional 152 teachers this year in grades four through six, and the funding for the Alabama National Recognized First Class Pre-K will be boosted by $13 million. The budget also ensured that the teachers and the state workers will not experience additional out-of-pocket costs related to the employment and health insurance benefits in the coming year. This year in the House, it was a lot different than what we had in the state. As you're well aware, we had reapportionment. Reapportionment as far as drawing our lines, and there was a bit of arguments about that because we had bills such as the Monument Bill that was being proposed as far as to save some of our history, and there was debate on how we should do it. The other issue was that we had the impeachment as far as the government, the governor was concerned, and I sat on that impeachment committee, and it was very taxing for myself and due to the fact that it slowed everything in the House. It shut everything down. When I came into this session in August, we talked with the Speaker, and one of the issues that I raised was that we always are going in there talking about as far as plans on what bills we anticipate, what we can do for the facility of Prattville, what sort of things can we do for the municipality. We failed to recognize certain things like playing defense, and what exactly does that mean as far as playing defense? There are actually bills that are in there that could be devastating to the City of Prattville. One bill was, for example, was raising the licensing fee in reference to pharmaceuticals, in reference to the pharmacy companies. We played defense on that. We did not want it to pass. We shut it down. It saved the city, Prattville, my understanding, according to the mayor, approximately about $140 million. It would have saved Millbrook about $100 million. I say that for a reason, because this bill's not going to go away. It's going to come back next sessions because you have certain groups. The other one that we played defense on, and we wanted to make it right, was the issue in reference to the prisons. The prison bill is very, it affects our area because of Elmore County, and the fact that we've got a lot of people over here that work over there, and we must be conscious about that. That prison bill is coming back, and we need your input as far as when it comes back, how to make it better. Clyde over here, Senator Chambliss is basically working on that as far as that, and he has always listening to ideas on that. The other bill was, there's a lot of mixed emotions on it as far as when I talk about defense, I talk about guns. The gun bill in reference to the permit, in reference, you heard a lot of discussion with our sheriff, he didn't want it. We heard a lot of discussion with Mark Thompson, that he didn't want it. I take the position that I don't want it either. I basically want to keep the permit bill in position. I don't want to basically have anybody around just carrying it without some sort of screening. Let me give you my thoughts on it. Everybody raises the fact that it's a Second Amendment right, that you have a right to bear and cause, and that the government shall not infringe upon that right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we do infringe on our rights, First Amendment right, freedom of speech, you pay taxes for that cell phone. If you want to assemble something, you have to pay for a permit. If you want a right to a trial, you have to pay for a complaint. If you want a jury trial, you've got to pay extra. I don't see the difference by asking our sheriff or our law enforcement to protect the lives of the citizens out there, to basically have to pay a little additional fee so that person can exercise their right in reference to a gun. So I say that advocateally, and I stress on that, and that bill will come back. One of the things that's going to have a change that I was involved in is what they call the crossover vote. We are, and you'll see it this year, and what that basically means is that we, basically, the Republicans adopted the same type of philosophy that the Democrats did in reference to the crossover. If you vote in the primary for a Republican, or then that means if there is a runoff, you must vote for a Republican. You can vote in that primary, that runoff, excuse me, you can vote in that runoff. If you don't vote in that primary, then you can vote in that, still vote as far as that runoff. If you vote as a Democrat in the primary, you cannot come over and vote in the primary as a Republican. So the idea is, when you go to vote this year in this special election, you will see that. And the reason why I raise that to a point, we have, I believe, 19 candidates running for the United States Senate. We have 10 individuals that are running on a Republican and nine on a Democrat. So you're going to have this bill that's going to be tested in reference to it, and it's going to be on a good, solid ground. And I think it just basically puts a level field out there in reference to as far as the voting and basically staying true to what your beliefs are and everything else. So when you go to vote in your primary, make sure that you understand that if you vote Democrat in the primary, if there's a runoff, you will not be able to vote for a Republican in a runoff. If you vote in the primary as a Democrat, you will not be able to vote in a runoff as a Republican. So if you don't vote at all, you can vote in the primary, I mean in the runoff, excuse me. I hope I didn't make that confusing. But anyway, that was one of the crucial things that came out recently, and you will get to see it there. I want to thank you for your time. If there's any questions, Clyde and I will be glad to answer it, or our phone is always open to y'all. You can always contact us and everything else, and we're here to serve. We work for you and the people, and we appreciate this opportunity of coming before you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and your service. Thank you.
Can we give them a round of applause for coming up and all their hard work? So, thank you, thank you. Well, at this time, if I can have Miley and Kim Curbin come up, and while they're coming up, a little something talking in front of you, in front of the council there, you'll see some of our Be Meaningful books. But Be Meaningful is a new community service project oriented in Prattville. It was created by a nine-year-old, Miley Curbin, and is a way to encourage kids to do good things in the community. Throughout this year, youth are encouraged to perform various acts of community service and acts of kindness. The idea is, don't be mean, be meaningful. Each individual performs at least 10 or more hours of community service over a 12-month period is recognized for their commitment to make our community better. Tonight, we have 12 of 20 individuals who are being recognized for their community service efforts. These individuals have completed a total of more than 813 hours of community service over the past 12 months. When youth volunteer, adults tend to volunteer also, resulting in a lifelong volunteer. The community gains a generation of young people who care about where they live and are willing to make a commitment to improvement. Volunteering helps youth to learn to respect others, to be helpful, understand people who are different, develop learnership skills, leadership skills, become more patient, better understand citizenship, and be kind. Statistics show that children who volunteer are better students, grow up to be volunteers, stay out of trouble, and more likely to become future community leaders like city council members or even a mayor. I encourage our community leaders to be mentors for our young volunteers and offer and assist them in the commitment to improve our community. Tonight, I will say thank you for all your hard work throughout this whole community, and I have a proclamation for you, and hope that you accept it and appreciate all your Long list of people behind you with some award pins. Come after the past, and I think on some police officers, I think I've seen a little blood to be drawn on that one. Y'all come on up? I'm invited. Stand on this.
Next. Scooch in. Y'all ready? Smile big.
If you look around and sue who they are here with, and recognize who their parents are, you'll see exactly how much volunteerism that Prattville's very pleased. I think Daniel Pratt would be pleased of his community knowing how well it has grown and everything. Uh, let's see, at this time, I'd like to invite the Lions Club members to come up. It's a centennial celebration for the Lions Club, so give me one moment as I step away. See, I'm proud to be a Lions Club, so if you guys will come on up, I'll have to say this for the record, the first group was a lot better looking, so it, uh... And while they're coming on up, I'm gonna go ahead and, and read this. Whereas the International Association of Lion Clubs was founded on June 7th, 1917, and is celebrating one-hundred years of humanitarian service. Whereas humanitarian service of Lions Clubs began in Alabama in 1922 with the chartering of Lions Clubs in Birmingham, Montgomery, and Mobile. Whereas the Lions of Alabama are members of the world's largest service club organization comprised of one-point-four million members and forty-six thousand clubs in more than two-hundred countries and geographic areas. Whereas Helen Keller, a native of Alabama, provided the Lions their signature cause of working with the blind when they accepted her challenge. Will you constitute yourselves knights of the blind in this crusade against darkness? During the Association's International Convention in 1925, whereas Alabama has one-hundred-and-thirty-three Lions Clubs with more than thirty-one hundred lions serving the citizens of our state. Whereas the Lions of Alabama provide service to thousands of individuals each year through statewide projects such as Alabama Lions Site Conservation, Alabama Lions Eye Clinic, Alabama Lions Vision Missions, Alabama Lions Eyeglass Recycling Center, Alabama Lions Opportunities for Youth Fund, Alabama Lions High School Leadership Forum, Alabama Lions High School All-Star Band, partnership with the Camp Sealed Hair Diabetes Camp, Southeast, Southeastern Diabetes Education Services, and countless services provided by Lions Club and their local communities. Now therefore, I, Bill Gillespie Jr., Mayor, do hereby proclaim 2017 as a year of Lions Centennial Celebration, and Prattville, Alabama, encourage our citizens to support them in their work on behalf of all residents. Please also join me in congratulating the Prattville Lions Club on their eighty-one years of distinguished service to our community, and they are accepting new members if I'm not mistaken. So we'll, let's give them a round of applause also.
Okay. Can y'all step forward and then scooch in? Yep, scooch is a technical term. A little bit more, Mr. George. I need y'all up. Okay. There you go. Pretty small. Thank you.
On three, one, two, three. I covered everything? Again, you know, most certainly, and there's a lot of other community groups out there, but we have some of the best food. Fourth of July is coming up. Fourth of July is coming up, and, and, and all the help, all the support most certainly being needed. Again, you know, it's great to know that volunteerism, patriotism is alive and well in Prattville, Alabama, so. And moving on to my report. Partnerships have played a significant role in recent projects. On Memorial Day, we partnered with American Legion, the VFW, held one of the best programs we have had. I was proud of patriotism that Prattville showed. Thank you, councilors, for joining us at that event. At this time, if I can have Pastor Dickerson to come up, last leg of my point of privilege. Now today, we kicked off another partnership with the Summer Meals Program in conjunction with United Christian Church, which benefits our own Parks and Rec Summer Program, the Library's Summer Program, and children all over Prattville. Thank you, councilors, for seeing value in this grant, the effort and the well-being of our children. They are our future, your support has made this happen. Pastor Dickerson and company came to us a year ago? About, about, almost a year ago, and was able to show us there was a need, worked through the mayor's office and through Carp Deck, and through so much behind-the-scenes work to be able to get some mini grants, and, and you also received some other grants. So you have definitely made your, your presence known in a very good way here in the city of Prattville, and if I might, just read this one real quick. Where summertime should, should be about children, children enjoying all that Alabama has to offer, from farm-fresh foods to our state's natural beauty. Whereas when school is out for summer, kids who count on eating meals at school might not otherwise have access to all the nutrition they need to be active and healthy. Whereas one of our, I'm sorry, whereas one in four Alabama children faces food insecurity and summer food service program meals provide an important source of good nutrition. Whereas summer food service program meal sites also provide Alabama children with a place to spend time with friends and stay active. Where summer meals can help children stay healthy and prepare them to return to school ready to learn and thrive. Whereas by increasing awareness of free summer meals through community outreach, adding new meal sites in the underserved areas, and investing in summer program, in summer programming to attract more kids to meal sites. Prattville can increase access to summer meals and the summer food service program. Whereas Prattville is committed to make and ensure no child goes hungry this summer. I therefore, Bill Gillespie, Mayor of Prattville, do hereby proclaim June 6, 2017, as a kickoff for the Healthy Summer Meal Kids for Prattville Program and City of Prattville and Earths of Residents of Prattville to make time to bring the children in their lives to join us for, for the festivities this day at the Otoga Prattville Public Library in conjunction with City Parks and Recreation and United Christian Church. Pastor Dickerson, if you would accept this, I'd certainly be honored.
Thank you.
He, Pastor Dickerson has been a great partner in Prattville, and I'm certainly appreciate him and all his efforts. You know, third partnership I'd like to mention tonight is one you have before you, an economic development agreement that culminated from partnerships with the state, the county, the chamber, the city, and a tremendous amount of work that was done by so many before and during this process. Partnerships have helped us to overcome our difficult times and will help us continue to be successful in the near future. On a personal level, faith, family, and friends are what drive me to do better and work for betterment in our community. Appreciate the partnerships and friendships I've developed with this council and myself. So thank you, and thank you for all your hard work and work that you will be doing in the future. Mr. President, that's the end of my reports.
Any comments or questions of the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We are truly a blessed community with great leaders. At this time, we will move into our special committee reports. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
No, sir.
Counselor Cables.
No, sir.
Counselor Strichett.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
No, sir.
Tonight, we have an opportunity to construct a consent agenda consisting of a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Resolution number two, to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance, order their abatement, and to set a public hearing per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Resolution to surplus two vehicles from the Public Works Department, Wastewater Division. Number four, resolution to surplus various office equipment and supplies from the Police Department. Resolution number five, to grant a retail beer off-premise license to Sarge Judith's Two Incorporated, doing business as Exxon Food Mart. Resolution number six, to reschedule the city council meeting of July 4th, 2017. And the seventh, a resolution to declare the structure located at 419 East Sixth Street to be unsafe and a public nuisance. Chair will entertain a motion to place these items on the consent agenda. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on this, these resolutions? Hearing none. All those in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, we now have a consent agenda. This time, the chair will entertain a motion for the adoption of this consent agenda. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there a discussion concerning any item on the consent agenda? At this time, we will call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, the consent agenda is adopted. We will now move into our regular agenda, resolution number one, to authorize demolition of dilapidated structure located at 570 East Sixth Street at a cost of seven-thousand-two-hundred dollars, and to award a contract to Schnuppe Enterprises LLC, doing business as JDog Junk Removal and hauling to complete demolition. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas under the authority of Title 11, Chapter 53B of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, the city of Prattville Code Enforcement Officer and Building Inspector declared the structure at 570 East Sixth Street to be unsafe and a public nuisance. And whereas on March 7th, 2017, the Prattville Police Department Code Enforcement Officer ordered the demolition of the structure at 570 East Sixth Street within forty-five days of said notice, and whereas said notice was delivered by certified mail to the last-known property owners and to all parties having interest in the property, and whereas no public hearing was requested by the property owners within thirty days of the date of notice as provided by Section 1153B-4, Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. And whereas on May 2nd, 2017, in Resolution Book 2017, page 69, the city council declared that the structure located at 570 East Sixth Street continued to be unsafe and a public nuisance that must be repaired or demolished. And whereas no repairs have been made to the structure, and it remains unsafe and a public nuisance, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to take whatever steps are necessary to remove the unsafe structure located at 570 East Sixth Street. Be it further resolved that a contract in an amount of seven-thousand-two-hundred dollars is awarded to Schnuppe Enterprises LLC, doing business as JDog Junk Removal and Hauling, to remove said structure located at 570 East Sixth Street, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated by, from fiscal year 2017 budget line item Police Department/ Dilapidated House demolition, the mayor should present the city council with a detailed list of the cost of removal. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there a discussion on this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is carried. Second resolution is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Hydro Engineering Solutions for Engineering Services to assist with program components of the Stormwater Management Program Plan at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Counselor Cables, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city has determined a need for assistance with various program components of its Stormwater Management Program Plan as required by National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems, Permit Number ALS 0000010. And whereas the city desires to retain Hydro Engineering Solutions, a division of Hydro LLC provides said engineering services. And whereas said services are available from Hydro Engineering Solutions at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. And whereas Section 41-16-51A3, Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, allows contracts to secure services with engineers possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding. And whereas said engineering services are a budgeted expense for the planning department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the mayor, mayor is authorized and empowered to enter into an agreement with Hydro Engineering Solutions for said engineering services. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Hydro Engineering Solutions, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2017 Planning Department/Professional Services. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor of adoption of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number three, to authorize the mayor to enter into an economic development agreement between the city of Prattville, the county of Otoga, the Waterworks Board of the city of Prattville, and James Hardy Building Products Incorporated. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, has been asked to consider and approve an agreement for use and grant of public funds and things of value to James Hardy Building Products Incorporated, a Nevada corporation, which agreement is attached hereto as Exhibit A, made a part hereof and incorporated herein by reference. Whereas pursuant to and in conformity with Amendment 772 to the Constitution of Alabama, as amended on May 27, 2017, the city clerk published that certain notice of action proposed to be taken by the city of Prattville, Alabama, at a public meeting, attached hereto as Exhibit B in the Prattville Progress and Montgomery Advertiser, the newspapers having the largest circulation in the city of Prattville, which publication was at least seven days prior to the date of the meeting at which this resolution is being considered. Whereas such notice further invited members of the public to attend the meeting and submit comments regarding the actions the city council is considering with respect to the transactions and agreements described in the notice. And whereas the city council at its meeting on June 6, 2017, offered members of the public the opportunity to comment on the matter set forth in the notice, and those comments have been considered by the city council. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville as follows. One, the city council finds and determines that the notice published in the Prattville Progress and Montgomery Advertiser satisfies the requirements of Amendment 772. Two, that the agreement between the city, the corporation, Otoga County, Alabama, and the Waterworks Board of the city of Prattville, Alabama, which is in substantially final form and is attached hereto and incorporated herein, shall be and is hereby approved. Three, that the mayor of the city shall be and hereby is authorized to execute and enter into the agreement in substantial conformity with the agreement here, attached hereto and made a part hereof as Exhibit A, and deliver the agreement set forth in this resolution to the other parties to the agreement or to their representatives. Four, that the mayor shall further be authorized to make such corrections or revisions to the text or form of the agreement as necessary prior to such execution, provided that any and such correction or revision shall not alter the material terms of the agreement. Five, that after due consideration, the city council finds and determines that the expenditure of public funds and granting of things of value for the purposes and in the manner specified in the agreement and the execution of the agreement approved in this resolution serve valid and sufficient public purposes, notwithstanding any individual benefit accruing to the corporation or any other private entities, entity or entities. Six, that the public benefits to the city resulting from the agreement and transactions hereby approved include the promotion and advancement of local economic and commercial development and the stimulation of the local economy, an increase in employment opportunities within the city, an expansion of the city's tax base which will result in significant additional tax revenues for the city, an increase in tax revenues for the schools operating in the city, and the expansion and retention of industrial and commercial enterprises in the city, all of which inure directly to the economic health and public welfare of the city and its residents. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there a discussion? At this time, all those in favor of this motion signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. With grateful appreciation to our economic developer and her staff, the Chamber of Commerce, our partners, Otoga County Commission, the Prattville Waterworks Board, and the state of Alabama, this motion is approved.
state of Alabama, this motion is approved. Welcome to Prattville, James Hardy. This concludes the agenda portion of our meeting. At this time, we will move into comments from persons present. Is anyone present that would like to make any comments? At this point, we will move into our closing comments. Mayor? Counselor Jackson?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Cables?
No, sir.
Counselor Strichett?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
At this time, I declare the meeting open for a motion to adjourn. All the, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign, we are adjourned.